This time I'd like to call the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities Board meeting of April 3rd to order. We'd like to welcome all listening or visiting this meeting of the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities, whether in person or through technology. The meeting is being recorded by both video and audio. During the visitors' comments section of the agenda, community members who wish to speak to the board will be asked to provide their name and address and will then have three minutes to speak. Members of the public using Zoom that wish to address the board need to use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the application or window to signal that they wish to address the board during the visitor comments section. In addition, there will be a public comments section after the general manager staff slash staff reports. During this session, the public may comment on this evening's presentations. Members of the public connected by phone only need to press star nine to indicate they wish to address the board in the visitors' comments section. Those attending in person should sign up on a sign up sheet located near the entry. Comments are limited to three minutes and should be directed to the board. As these comments are public, the board cautions visitors to not disclose confidential account information or information on an account that is not in their name. Staff will not provide individual account information or history in an open meeting. As always, the public may also call the BPU with any concerns. The agenda and presentations may be found on the BPU website, or if you are using Zoom, they will appear on your screen. As a reminder, this is a business meeting of the Board of Directors and we will conduct the meeting accordingly. The following rules apply to this meeting. Every person in the room will act respectfully towards each other. Personal attacks and accusations toward any person will not be tolerated. State your specific issue to the board only. We will then determine staff's involvement. And attendees shall refrain from side discussion or individual commentary that interferes with speakers or other attendees at this meeting. If side discussion is necessary, please take it outside of the boardroom. If any of the rules above are breached during the meeting, that individual is subject to removal from the boardroom. My name is Tom Groneman, a member of Second District and Board President. Other members of our board and staff include Bill Johnson, hopefully at some point in time, David Haley, Member at Large, Position Two, Stevie Wakes, First District, Brett Parker, Third District, Mary Gonzalez, Member at Large, Position One, Rose Mulvaney Henry, Member at Large, Position Number Three, and Angela Lawson, our Chief, Acting Chief Counsel. Please, as a reminder, please put your phones on mute or silent. Please also be aware that the microphones are very sensitive and can pick up and record comments made anywhere in the room. Before we begin our meeting, if you would please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Angela.
Roll call, Parker.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Groneman.
Here.
Haley.
Here.
Wakes.
Here.
Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
You have a corn.
Okay. Before I ask for a motion to approve this evening's agenda, are there any comments or additions or deletions to that agenda?
Moved to move, move to approve tonight's agenda.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Okay, before I ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of March twentieth, twenty twenty four, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
I move adoption of the minutes.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the minutes. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Johnson.
All right. Chris, is there anyone signed up waiting to speak tonight? I have Louise Lynch signed up to speak. Mrs. Lynch, if you could. If you can state your name and address for the record, and you have, you have three minutes.
Five minutes. According to what I signed up online, it's about five minutes.
Okay.
I think that we have, under the new policies, it's three minutes, but because we haven't changed the message online, and you signed up, we'll go ahead and allow you to have your five minutes.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Tom. My name is Louise Lynch. I reside in KCK here. I have numerous things to speak about, and I'll try and be quick. The first one I want to speak about is in regards to the article that came out on the Sentinel last week, I believe it was last week, in regards to all the salaries and in regards to there are people able to not use their sick pay and get a cash payout at the end of the year. We have that kind of extra money to pay out to people than we have money to lower our rates. And some of these rates are just ridiculous. Some of the ones that are not here are those of our attorney here, Angela Lawson, who gets a paid fee from here and the UG. Approximately, I believe it's about a hundred and sixty one thousand from each, which is over three hundred and twenty thousand for one person. These salaries are enormous, especially when they do not protect the people. They do not communicate with the people. There are a lot of issues within the UG and here that are hurting our community, especially when it comes to the stormwater and the other fees that you are now the collection agency for. I'm going to ask Mr. Johnson himself to speak to the UG directly to not collect these fees for the stormwater for people who do not have building on their land, who have blank land. That program was rolled out by Jeff Fisher, the billing. It was not yet authorized when he did it on his own. That is also known to legal. As a result, you all are now building over ten thousand people for land that absorbs the water and that has nothing to do with the stormwater fee at all. The land naturally absorbs that water. For you to have to have the man hours and the materials to use to put that bill out is unfair to the public. It is unfair to us because when you take on that fee, you put it on our bill, you spread it out, and that is not acceptable at all. So I am asking Bill Johnson himself to refuse to collect this bill because it is another harsh payment that we have to pay out. And some people are paying exorbitant amount of money out unnecessarily. The other thing that, you know, we're talking about Jeff Fisher who did this, there are many things that he is doing in the community that affect the UG and the BPU because we are the same customers. He has a YouTube channel where he has asked people in the community, his group, his private for-profit group has asked the people in the community to go to where he's at to suck his genitals. That's disgusting. That should not be had by anyone. The legal department, Angela Lawson and her group have been aware and have done nothing. There have been discriminatory memes put out on Facebook that are disgusting. They have done nothing. They have blamed the emergency management department, which has nothing to do with it. But now he has been stopped from telling his side of the story by Angela Lawson and her group, that he is not allowed to respond until they craft a response. That's not what we pay an attorney for. Last week, Angela Lawson took away the federal disability rights of myself and the constitutional rights of others. We can't have that here. We can't have that there. There has to be rules of order and federal law does apply. We can't have everyone being paid these fees because one person decides, as he put in the UG website,
You have thirty seconds.
Thank you, that we have not paid our fair share. This is not acceptable, and I don't want the rest of you to accept this kind of mess. I've given everyone out a complaint packet with all different kind of articles by different places. And those who want to file a complaint against Angela Lawson or any member of the legal team, please fill it out. If you need help, I would be happy to help you, along with my team. Thank you.
Rob, I'll ask if there's anyone online.
No, sir, there are no hands currently raised. Ms. Hall had raised her hand and lowered it, so I just want to give her a chance to speak again if she does want to raise it. Ms. Hall, if you want to speak, please do raise your hand and I'll enable your microphone. It looks like she does want her hand. Okay.
Is she wanting to speak?
Yeah.
Did she hear me okay?
Ms. Hall, you'll need to unmute your microphone if you want to speak.
Okay. Okay. Well, good afternoon, good evening, sir, all members of the board. Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to speak again. I'm just giving you guys an update. Thank you all for trying and helping, helping our community, especially those of us that we have limited language. It has been a little better, and so I just wanted to give you guys an update and appreciate the time that you guys have given me, even though I made a lot of mistakes as I speak. But, you know, I appreciate it and I'm grateful. We still have a couple of families, but again, I know that there's some limitations that I can do in advocating for their bills and stuff like that, hoping that they're willing to come up and set an appointment so they can talk to your customer services. As far as other issues, I'll continue to wait, but I wanted to say thank you so much. And I know that I push sometimes a little bit of a limit, but I'm learning to navigate and, and step out of my comfort zone. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Rob, I don't see anyone else. I'm just asking for you to confirm that. Okay, thank you. So all right, we'll move on to, well, first, any board comments. We'll move on to general manager staff reports. First on the agenda is preliminary February twenty twenty four financials. Lori Austin will be providing that tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening, Lori.
Tonight, we'll be going over the preliminary results for February twenty twenty four. We're still in the middle of our audit, so we'll do preliminary until we finalize our audit. First page looks at our electric usage year to date. So in comparison to twenty twenty two, we are slightly below by about a half percent where we were in twenty twenty three. Overall, very comparable. So our residential and commercial classes were slightly above, each by about a half percent. Our industrial was down about three and a half percent. On the water side, we're about one point four percent above twenty twenty three residential, as well as our industrial, we're down, residential's down slightly by half percent as well as industrial. Commercial, we're seeing up about five percent. Looking at our revenues for the month of February, we're about six and a half percent below February of twenty twenty three. It translates to about two million below. From a budget to actual, we're about five point six percent or about one point eight million below budget. The electric is down about five percent while water is down about nine percent. One of the variances there in comparison to twenty twenty three, it is a lower ERC in twenty twenty four than in twenty twenty three. We're about four point seven cents in twenty three and about three point nine cents in twenty four. Looking at our revenues from a year-to-date perspective, from actual, or comparing budget to twenty twenty three, I'm sorry, comparing twenty twenty four to twenty twenty three year-to-date, we're about five, five percent below twenty twenty three levels. That translates to about three point three million below. Electric overall is the majority of that, about, down about three point two million. Budget to actual, we're down about three point five percent. About one point seven of that is the electric side and four hundred thousand on the water side. Some of the variances, budget to actual, sorry, Rob. So residential's down about six hundred forty thousand. We were seeing commercial up about hundred seventy thousand. Our industrial's down about eight hundred and sixty. And then our wholesale is down about one point one million. On the water side being down about four percent, about two hundred thousand on the residential. Commercial's up about ninety thousand and wholesale's down about sixty thousand. We have recognized two months' worth of our six-month ERC over recovery, which is translates to about one point three, one point four million. Looking at our operating expenses for the month of February, we're down about thirteen and a half percent in comparison to twenty twenty three. Three point four million of that is on the electric side. And then we're up about four hundred thousand on the water side. Budget to actual, we're up about, I'm sorry, we're down about seventeen percent below budget. Three point six of that is on the electric side and about three hundred thousand of that is on the water side. So electrics down about nineteen percent while water is down about nine percent. Looking at our year-to-date, so we're up in comparison twenty three by about eleven percent. Budget to actual, we're up about almost seven percent. A total of about three point one million above with electric being three point six above. Water's down about five hundred and thirty thousand. So the electric's up about nine percent while water's down about seven percent. And just to kind of summarize the, the chart to the right, our fuel and purchase power represents about fifty two percent of our operating expenses year-to-date, while transmission distribution is about nineteen percent. Production's about fifteen percent and our GNA is about fourteen percent. Our operating expenses, less depreciation, we're, we're up about twelve point nine percent, which translates about fourteen point eight over twenty twenty three levels. We're up about seven percent budget to actual, which translates about two point eight million, three point four of that is on the electric side and five hundred thousand under budget is on the water side. So on the electric, our purchase power is up about five point nine million. Fuel is up about seventy two thousand. Production, TND and, and GNA are all down through year-to-date. On the water side, all their expense categories are down below budget.
Hey, Lori, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So on the purchase power there, the five point nine million, it is that? This is for February, right?
This is year-to-date. So the
Oh, okay.
The January was a, a bad month of, of being out on the market.
Right.
And February was pretty close.
But January is where we get, okay, all right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the market settled down too in February. Okay. Go ahead. Okay, so looking at our change in net position for the month of February, we, we're at a combined six million positive. Twenty twenty three, we're at four point seven million compared to a budget we projected to be about three point eight million. On the budget actual for the electric side, we were at six million positive while water has a very slight eight, eighty nine thousand dollars below budget. Looking at a year-to-date change in net position, in twenty twenty three, we're at a positive nine million. For a budget, we projected to be about six point seven million positive. And to year-to-date, we're about two point four million positive. This just looks at our tenure trend, looking really at twenty three to twenty four. So our revenues are in twenty three, we're about fifty four point six million with our expenses about forty six point eight. So that's where we're netting about seven point eight million. On the electric side with in twenty four, so our expense, our revenue was about fifty million. I'm sorry, fifty one point four million. Our expense is about fifty point four million, so a net of about nine hundred and fifty thousand. This is our tenure trend on the water side. Revenue is pretty comparable twenty three to twenty four, so at eight and a half million and twenty three and eight point six and twenty four. Our expenses were seven point three and twenty three with seven point two and twenty four. So we had a net of about one point two million in twenty twenty three and a net of about one point four million in twenty twenty four.
Lori, I don't think I understood the previous slide on
On the electric?
Yeah, on the electric, why it is so, so much more close than it was the previous year?
I think our expenses were up in twenty, year-to-date twenty twenty four.
Okay.
For, I mean, in twenty twenty four with our, with our purchase power. It was probably about six million dollars more than what we projected.
Is that twenty twenty four a projection?
Oh, that's
No, no. Just in comparison to twenty three, while expenses were up, that's what I think he's asking, right?
Yes.
So we just had higher expenses in twenty twenty four through February year-to-date.
I'm wondering why the revenue was down.
It is a, it's a lower ERC, so
ERC, that's what I, I'm a lower ERC. I wrote it down and did, thank you.
And I'd also say, you know, it was a warmer winter. Usually when we have a really, I mean, we had a cold spell, but not very long. When we have a colder winter, that helps with our revenues as well. And, I mean, we just had a short little spell of cold weather. So overall, the, the winter was warmer. That impacts, you know, the lower ERC rate also.
Thank you.
Impacts that.
Thank you.
Next slide. So our average daily collections, so for February, we collected about almost one point seven. We were about one point eight in January. One point six is, is comparable to twenty twenty two. And as I, twenty three is a little bit higher. And I think translate that into also the higher ERC at that time. Looking at our cash year-to-date, so we did have a drop in cash, about three point five million. So year-to-date, we've dropped overall about almost seven point six million. In comparison to twenty twenty three, we had dropped about five point eight million. So just trying to minimize the, we know we're in our shoulder months and that's kind of where we dropped some cash, and we're just trying to minimize that drop. I will tell you, we're working on preliminary March right now and, and it does show a positive cash flow of a couple million so far, so. So our cash position, so our days cash on hand for February, seventy seven days. We were eighty one days in January. In comparison to where we were a year ago, we were at fifty nine days. The fuel inventory, we're currently have about ten point four million value of our fuel inventory on hand. We were about eight point one million last year at this time. This graph, this historical graph of our days cash on hand. So as I said, we're at seventy seven days. Our capital spending.
Lori, would you, can I stop you for a second? You said ten point what on our fuel on hand?
Ten point four, I think.
As compared to what last year?
Eight point one.
Eight point one. Okay, thanks.
We're still hanging around, I think about eighty days is what I saw. So it's a little bit higher than what we
Normal, yeah, that is
What we, what our target is anyway. I think they had stopped the train through February, is that right? And it was to pick back up or through March?
Yeah, and I, I mean, I don't have the data in front of me. I was to what our runtime was the first quarter of last year compared to now is.
Okay, in March, okay. And so no, no trains in January, February, and just started receiving coal in March.
We talked about that the other day, and we are anticipating having them run more. So even though the inventory is higher and with us managing our train delivery, we expect that to come back down.
Yeah, because it hasn't been running much.
Yeah. Your microphone on.
Can you hear me okay? All right, sorry.
Okay, capital spending. So, so far, we spent about four percent of our money, so about two and a half million to date. We have a budget overall about sixty seven million. Some of the projects, just our overhead distribution, about four hundred thousand. Underground distribution, about three hundred. Continuing our whole inspection program, distribution, poll inspection, about three hundred and twenty. And then did have an order for underground transformers, about three hundred and fifty thousand. And then some IT technology, about two hundred and seventy, and then our water distribution, about a hundred and eighty, eighty five thousand. And like our debt coverage with pilot, so we're at a combined rate of two point three seven times. Electric's at two point two four times and water is at two point four six times. Looking at our debt coverage without pilot, overall, we're about one point six five times with electric being one point five three and water one point eight seven. Any questions? Thank you.
It's our preliminary.
Yep.
So next on the agenda, I had a conversation with Jeremy. I know here recently with the volatility that we've talked to the board about and, you know, what, what we're at a market. here recently with the volatility that we've talked to the board about and, you know, when it, what what the word of market is. I mean, we are talking across ECC, the power plants are more heavily engaged in having those internal conversations and tracking where the market is so that we can optimize our 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 operations and try to uh make sure we're getting the best operation out of our plant when possible. At the same time, trying to control our costs, so I thought it would be good to kind of show you some of the training and the in internal conversation we're having uh between departments on how we're better managing our our generation fleet. Yes, sir. Jaren?
Good evening, Board. Um, like Bill said, uh, this was something that was brought to me and I know he and Jeremy had talked about it and then Jeremy and Don had talked a little about it. When I presented and talked to you, um, one of the things that we're really trying to uh work hard on is collaboration and and different communication um channels and practices and things we haven't done and kind of engaging with our internal customers a little bit more, so. Um, this kind of fell in line with with uh what we're trying to do in my group, Jeremy had talked to Don. And there were a lot of people, employees and staff members at the, in the production group that had a lot of questions uh when Nierman wasn't on, had a lot of questions uh as it pertains to the market and and a lot of the things that they were getting were secondary. Uh, and may or may not have been accurate. So I'm a, I mean, I'm a little bit embarrassed that I let it get to this, we used to do pretty regular training with the production group uh back when the market was more, uh, I guess relatively new. And that kind of faded out as we thought people were kind of up to speed, but with the turnover and some of the changes that we've seen, it was long overdue and I'm glad that Jeremy and and Don brought it to my attention. So what I'm going to take you through uh today. Uh, we put together this presentation, we took it down and presented it to the management team uh at Nierman. Primarily to bring them, bring them up to speed, get any feedback from them, but then also um give them an opportunity to help my team develop something more specific for each individual working group down there. Who has questions, what kind of questions are they, do these answer the questions? And then uh we can kind of tweak it to where the information is relative to the group that we're going to present to. Go ahead, um, so as I take you through this, I'll take it, I'll take you through it a- as a, from the perspective of the production group and kind of how we how we focus this information uh to make it relevant to them and and try to drive some conversation and and uh create some uh questions if they had any and be able to answer those questions. So we really just wanted to take them through kind of a thirty thousand foot overview of the components of the integrated marketplace, how it works. Refresher training for a lot of team members down there, but at the same time, it was and had enough detail for anyone that was new and wasn't aware of how the SPP IM works. They had versus real time market and and what those impacts are from a production standpoint. And then one of the biggest changes that's coming that will impact uh not only BPU, but but all the members of uh SPP is some changes to the way they're going to credit capacity. And the resource adequacy component, component for uh members. So um, that obviously carries some weight with the production group, it's also some good information that if you haven't heard it in detail, I'll go into a little bit of detail tonight on what what is coming with the with the new requirements there. And then we just, like I said, we wanted to encourage discussion and questions and conversations with the team. And I think it's going to be even more beneficial when we get with the individual working groups down there and allow them to feel like they're a part of it, they they are obviously a part of it. And and I think sometimes you can feel like if you're not getting real time information, maybe you don't have the buy in necessarily with some of the processes. So we want to, we want to bring everybody up to speed, give them as much information as they would like to get. And uh hopefully we can create a more unified culture down there.
Is is this our first time seeing this presentation?
This will be the first one, some of this will be redundant from the presentation that you you guys saw on your, on your tour of ECC, but it's, it's pretty general um market stuff and then um so some new stuff with the resource, resource adequacy. But there'll also be some information that's specific to how the production group would see this as well. So this is the actual training that we presented and then when I'm done. Don's going to take you through some of the things that came out of the meeting, some of the operational changes they're going to do to accommodate these things. And then to talk a little bit about the training that we're going to conduct going forward.
Thank you.
So I wanted to, I wanted to make sure that the production group knew and the team members down there knew. So with with the Consolidated Balancing Authority, SPP is performing the balancing function. The the economic piece is something new, when we were our own balancing authority, that was something that we were tasked with balancing our load with our own generation. What SPP has done now regionally is they've got access to all of its participants' generators. And by definition, it allows them to dispatch the most cost effective energy to serve the load from a region wide perspective. So it should be more economical because they have access to more uh uh, a a more vast portfolio of generation.
Hey, Jaren?
Yes.
Real quick, how long has BPU been a part of SPP?
So the the market, Integrated Marketplace went live in uh March first of two thousand fourteen.
Fourteen, thank you.
But as far as, you know, they were the regional entity before, I'm not sure how long our relationship goes back, but that's when the market went live.
Thank you.
Dayhead market, I'll get into real time balancing market and the and the kind of nuances back and forth between those. And then the reliability unit commitment process and how that affects the way our generators get dispatched. Go ahead, Robert. So the day head market, uh that that nine thirty AM uh deadline is the, is one of the important messages I wanted to convey to the production group. So the system operators at ECC are going to submit all of our uh generation data to the market. It has to be done prior to nine thirty AM because that's when SPP begins the process of committing generators region wide to set the table for the following operating day. So the day head market, it's a financially binding market and it's an economic um hedge a lot of times because you don't have the real time volatility that could, you could see with intra day, operating, big units trip, storms come through, transmission outage, just things like that. So day ahead um is important for us to submit accurate data. It's something that SPP is going to commit us to prior to that operating day. So the message that I wanted to make sure that they knew down there is if there's something potentially that could impact that unit's availability, if there's something that may limit that generator's uh output, any of the parameters associated with it. Getting that information before we commit that unit to a certain performance parameter. We need to be able to to respond accordingly. Because when you, when you can't provide the commitment, there, there's potentially financial consequences there. So I wanted to understand the timeframe and the sense of urgency uh that we have sometimes in the mornings. Um, real time balancing market. So they set the table on the day ahead, the real time balancing market is just, it's going to be just a continue, continuous balancing effort, real time to respond to anything that's happened that they weren't able to forecast for, units trip, temperatures could be warmer in some areas than they thought, there could be some maintenance taking place, things like that. So that's where we're going to see um generators respond real time, where SPP will move them up, they'll move them down, uh, they may bring on additional generation, which is typically when you see our uh CT two and three units uh get called on. So that's more of a real time uh function, next slide please. One of the, one of the important factors, I I kind of touched on it with the day ahead. Uh, and another thing that I wanted them to to be aware of, uh, now that we're not, we're we're no longer um our own balancing authority. We actually um put in an amount of load that we, we use some forecasting tools for in the day ahead. And whatever our load is, we're going to bid that load in and we purchase every single megawatt of load. And then any generation that we have is a separate transaction into the market. So the way the market is designed, being economically driven, we can serve the load to our customers at times with minimal generation on, if it's more economic to do that. And I'll get into some of the factors that that uh could lead to that. Real time, um, again, we're going to bid that load in, if there's any deviation from the forecasted load that we have, it's it's nearly impossible to to project an inaccurate, um, hundred percent accurate load. We're going to respond accordingly, uh, whether it's higher or lower. Will, will uh purchase if we were short and then SPP will buy back the megawatts if we were high. Resource offer day ahead, similar, the resource offer is going to be all the parameters associated with our generators. We submit that information to SPP, they're taking that into account with every other generating facility in the footprint and they're dispatching the most cost effective generation to serve the load for the following day. And then real time, they respond accordingly, I've I've touched on how the real time market works, so. Where this is pertinent to the production group. Again, it goes back to if we commit to something in the day ahead and they, and they, they have an expectation of a commitment from one of our generators and something were to happen and we can't provide those megawatts. Um, we're responsible for those megawatts at whatever the real time prices are. So we could potentially be exposed to real time pricing volatility, depending on what's going on with the market. But it, each entity that can't fulfill their day ahead obligation meets that obligation in the real time market and it's, at that point, it's just a financial transaction, so. Back one, there we go. Yeah, this is just kind of driving home that point.
And considering those real time prices could vol, could change quite a bit, right?
So, yeah. There, there, the day ahead is is um obviously, it's not taking into account any volatility on the system, so it's, it's, it's much more stable and it it's treated as a financial hedge uh to be like an insurance plan almost. Uh, the real time market isn't always volatile, it just can be. So we try to do, we we try to do the least amount we have to in the real time, just to minimize exposure. But you know, things happen and and you know, it doesn't necessarily mean that had a negative financial impact, we just try to avoid those situations if we can. And then I touched on it earlier, but the the energy sales that that our generators produce is essentially just, it's treated as offsetting our load costs, so we're paying for every megawatt of load. And then any gen, any megawatt that we generate brings that load cost down. So that's something we look at a lot um in, in our purchase power is, you know, adding, adding the, figuring out a way to leverage our generators the best we can economically to have value in the integrated marketplace so we can offset our load costs, essentially just driving down the load costs, which, you know, benefits the customers and that's the goal.
Right.
Next slide. Some of the factors in this, these are all kind of a two way street. I wanted to talk to the the team down there, a lot of them had questions as to why Nierman wasn't running as often. Primarily, the reason we've seen over the last year and a half, the, the lower uh runtimes for Nierman. Natural gas prices are at an all time low, which is, which is essentially pricing the gas turbines cheaper than what a lot of the coal units are. So when you've got lower load across the footprint, low natural gas prices. And then typically in the shoulder months, you're going to see higher wind output. Wind and low gas prices are one of the biggest drivers as as to what specifically has kept Nierman off a little more. Uh, now, on the flip side, we've also seen extremely high gas prices and we've seen times where the wind isn't blowing. So it can be, it can be flipped in a hurry and you know, it's all, it's all depending on the uh, on those two things. We, we see it a lot of times in the summer. And in the colder winter months that the wind output isn't there and a lot of times the market prices will reflect that and you'll see more runs with Nierman. I would, I would, I would say as we're getting out of uh the shoulder months and into into May, we're going to start to see Nierman come on and stay on just by the nature of the, of the uh of the season and then uh the demand on the system. So uh, scheduled outages is not, is another thing, uh, Nierman's getting ready to go into their spring outage, uh, Nierman has been running uh off and on this last week or so because a lot of the other utilities have taken their big units out of service for their spring outages. So outages across the um, across the region are going to impact the supply, which is going to impact um the usage of our generators. Local reliability, a lot of times, uh, that's something that SPP will take into consideration in the real time if they if they need to alleviate an overload on a transmission line or if there's something that um is causing some risk to the system, a lot of times that's where you'll see some voltage support um uh by bringing on combustion turbines, units that can be online quick, you'll see that a lot of times with CT two and CT three. Um, and then obviously season and temps, we all understand how that works, the warmer the temperatures or the colder the temperatures, the more demand there is. So um, these are all things that impacted specifically gas prices and wind. That was, that was something I wanted to get across to the production group because there was a lot of a lot of people wondering why things changed so much, you know, in a short period of time. And it was all driven primarily by the drop in uh gas prices, so. Next. So then we get into the uh resource adequacy and then the reason I wanted to bring this to their attention is because SPP is going to change the way that they account for uh capacity accreditation and our availability and our performance is going to be magnified in how we can count the capacity that we have. So for the thermal units, they're going to a performance based approach. I would say two thousand twenty six would be aggressive, they're saying twenty six, twenty seven for implementation. I would assume it's going to be in the, in the twenty seven range, but what they're doing is they're going back through seven years of performance data, they're going to be looking at the GAD's data. And one of the differences is they're going to take into account D rates. And they're going to, they're going to obviously
D rates.
So if there's something going on at the, at the plant that it can't perform at its maximum output and they have to decrease the amount of megawatts that they can put out. There's maintenance issues or things happen and Don could give you more clarification on that. But anything that would limit the normal output of that generator, we have to submit, it's considered a D rate, which which would then impact our total um capacity numbers, so.
Kind of like a derating.
Yeah, they're just, yeah, just so they're going to look at um they've got two seasons that they're going to account for this, so there's going to be uh June through September and uh December through March, which is done for a couple reasons. One, they have to allow some time for scheduled maintenance, so they've, they've strategically provided a couple months in the, in the shoulder seasons for spring and fall outages, which is typically when a lot of the maintenance gets performed without penalizing the utility. But during those you know, the summer season and the winter season, we need to do everything we can to make sure that our generators are as available as possible, it doesn't mean they necessarily have to run, they just need to be available. And when they do run, you know, the better we perform, the more capacity we'll be able to um take credit for. So it's different than the way we've done it before, we would do a performance test annually. And you know, essentially, if we were able to satisfy whatever our max output on those generators was, we would be able to count that as our, as our capacity. So now they're going to take more of an average um rolling average of the data. So inevitably, not just us, but every generator across the footprint is going to have less capacity than it, than it had before, it's just the nature of it, things break with these, with these big uh generators and and the reason SPP is doing it, as as much of a challenge as I think it's going to cause for a lot of people, it's a good thing that they're It's a good thing that they're doing it because what they're, what they're doing is they're trying to hedge against. Uh, supply issues that we've had in some of these winter weather events, so they're, they're essentially forcing the hand of the generator owners. To find a way to increase the capacity. To make sure that we don't run into supply issues regardless of what season we're in. So the winter weather events that we've seen was, was a driver um for this. And I think what they've done is they've, they've put some things in place that essentially forced the hand of, of the generator owners to. Essentially provide more capacity than we were even before.
Is, is part of that, sorry to interrupt, but is part of that because a lot of the thermal plants, you know. We jump back in time thirty years, there's some that are aging, but there's probably new ones coming online. We had a time where collectively across the entire pool. It's more likely that those thermal plants are going to be aging and so. Sort of making that higher bar to reach helps offset. A potential problem where one becomes unavailable when you need it.
That's a lot of, the winter, specifically with the winter, what they ran into was, I mean, you know, five, six years ago, there was a significant amount of coal retirements. Um, environmentally driven coal retirements and a lot of those units were. More baseload units that were there and available and the gas units weren't necessarily treated as baseload. Well, now that we've, we've retired across the footprint, we retired a lot of the baseload units. The next fuel type up was natural gas. And that's why we're running into some of the challenges we have in the winter months. So the supply, natural gas supply in the winter months. Is a challenge for a couple of reasons. One, you've got the residential load that's higher and then you've got. Only so much room in the pipeline and then you've got potentially um. Operational challenges with wellheads and you know, I don't know enough about that, but you, you come, you. When the temperatures get bitter cold, you, you run into some challenges with actually getting that fuel to the. To the plant itself, so that's where a lot of the winter challenges have come from. So yeah, there, there was kind of a flip with uh losing a lot of the baseload. Um, coal type units and then um that kind of bringing the, the gas units to the forefront. Which is what has led to a lot of these winter uh weather supply issues. Another thing they've done to hedge against it is. They've created a formula on the way that we account for capacity with renewables. So they're calling that their effective load carrying capability. The ELCC is essentially going to change the way we. Count capacity on renewables, so. Early expectations for our wind capacity accreditation is going to drop by approximately seventy percent. And what they've done there is the previous formula was. The amount of wind that you have. And in the formula, it was based off of your load. Well, now it's the amount of wind that you have. Compared to SPP's forecasted load. So they're going to decrease the amount of capacity we can count on our wind and then with solar. Uh, they're looking at fifty to seventy percent capacity factors in the summer months. But they expect that to drop to close to uh ten to twenty percent in the winter, so. As you can see by these numbers, there's going to be a lot of um. Balancing that's going to have to take place uh on the entities part, on the, on the. Generator owners part to ensure that they can meet that hundred and fifteen percent capacity requirement, so. That number is increased as well. It used to be a hundred and ten percent of your annual peak. And it's steadily been increasing, it's going to a hundred and fifteen percent, so if our annual peak is five hundred megawatts. In order to satisfy the capacity requirements. We will need to have a hundred and fifteen percent of that five hundred megawatts in available capacity, so. You start adding up all these numbers and, and you, you take into account that the expectation is that we're going to decrease our capacity amount. At some level, just based on the new rules. And certainly how we account for the renewables, capacity is going to be uh a significant priority for. All utilities across the footprint. From SPP's perspective, it's necessary and it will ultimately lead to a more reliable. Interconnection and, and ultimately more reliable uh SPP service area. But there's going to be some challenges along the way for, for the utilities. I talked a little bit about the GAD's data, that's the data that they're going to use and it's going to, it's going to include the forced D rates. Um, in addition to forced outages. So one of the things that production's going to do with that is be a little more strategic on. Their maintenance, so we talked a lot about. The minimum timeframe that we need to get a scheduled outage to SPP for them to not consider it forced. So we're going to be. A lot more proactive in our maintenance schedules with our power plants uh in the past. We, we had the luxury of maybe pushing it to the limit until something were to break and then. Then we could just take it off and fix it. Those outages are going to be looked at differently now, so we have to be uh more proactive in when we take the unit off. How we take it off and how we communicate that to SPP. Outages are still going to occur, maintenance still needs to occur, it's just we need to make sure SPP is aware and approves of it. To ensure that it doesn't, it doesn't get put into that forced category, which essentially will bring our capacity number down.
I know we're not setting, you know, we're just reacting to rules that are being given to us, but can you speak at all to why? Why is the, why, why did SPP choose to use the effective load carrying capability for renewables as opposed to just? Treating them all, you know, with that performance based approach? Is it lack of seven years of data on some of them?
I don't know why they were so aggressive on the, on, on the formula for the ELCC other than. When, like when specifically. The lowest wind output we have is the heat of the summer and the bitter cold winter and those are the two most. At risk times that we have on the interconnection, so I think what they've done is they've just aggressively hedged against. Any possible supply issues by saying. You know. The wind is, the, the wind, the supply of the wind is, is great when it's blowing. No different than solar, but. When you're responsible for the balancing uh function of this entire footprint, you've got to have contingencies in place and plan on. You know, that hundred and ten degree July day. When we're getting five hundred megawatts of wind across the entire footprint. When we're used to getting twenty to thirty thousand megawatts of wind potentially on any given day in April. So that they. I think they had to come up with a, with a formula and I think they aired on the aggressive side just to ensure coverage.
Moving, and I know we're, now we're speculating in the future, but I would imagine if we should see gains in. Battery storage capacity and that would give them kind of some safety net to. Pull back on some of those and not have to rate them based on their least effective seasons.
Yeah, I, I would say that's common and you know. Probably going to be a major expense and then you know, that's going to be something that's going to have to be weighed as far as, you know. How much. You know, utilities are willing to invest and how effective they are and I don't, I don't think there's a lot of data out there yet on that, but. This was, like I said, this was an aggressive approach and I think. I think it's going to cause some challenges. I think from SPP's perspective, it was needed, but we've seen it nationwide these last couple of years. Uh, with these cold, cold snaps. And again, I don't think the, I don't think the summer risk is. The biggest risk anymore. It used to be our biggest concern uh locally was always the, the hot days. Potentially having some voltage issues on the lines and, and needing to shed load from that perspective, but we've seen. So many supply challenges in the cold stretches that we've had these last three years. That we're, we're always on the razor's edge during those weeks and typically in the summer months, we don't see the. System challenges that we've seen, so I think, I think winter is the key driver here. And I think it's a perfect storm with uh gas supply issues and the lack of, of wind in those cold months. I think that's what drove this, so. Next slide, Robert.
I was looking at the dates that, that you provided. Did you say June through September, then September through March?
Uh, December through March.
December through March.
Yep, so you, the fall months will be October, November. That the, the numbers won't be, they won't count in the performance based approach and then um April and May.
Very good, those are, they, they want to give time for maintenance and.
Early. Forecast, I guess, SPP is anticipating three to seven percent impacts on, on current registered capacity, so. Going on those numbers, um. You know, you, you consider three to seven percent impact on this performance based approach a decrease. So like I said, it's going to, it's going to increase the value of, of, of capacity, so. From our perspective and our, in our work with the production group. You know, dialing in our maintenance, being more uh proactive on scheduling. Some things you can't control, but we want to, we want to be as dialed in as we can on the things that we can and, and try to. Be a step ahead on, on taking that unit off and making sure that it doesn't fall into that forced outage uh category. The capacity market. Is really starting to um expand and essentially all that is, is. The utilities out there that will have an abundance of capacity are essentially going to sell. We call it paper capacity, if they've got. In excess of fifteen to twenty percent of their peak load. They can start breaking off chunks of capacity that they can sell to utilities that. Aren't able to satisfy their capacity requirements, so. If we're long on capacity, it's going to give us. The opportunity to leverage some of our capacity in the capacity market if we're short, any, if any, if anyone is short. They're going to have the opportunity then to. Make up that shortage with capacity from someone else, but the end game will be from SPP's perspective. Everyone will satisfy that one hundred and fifteen percent capacity requirement, so.
Jaren, is this something that's just related to Southwest Power Pools or other power pools doing this as well?
Yes, I know, I know some, uh, some other RTOs are doing, I, I don't know specifically what their approach is, I know. SPP works closely with MISO, which would be their neighbor to the east. FERC kind of drove the uh winner preparedness um action after the events that we've had. And they've got, the, the, the RTOs have. A lot of really smart people in these working groups that were, you know, tasked with coming up with ways to. To make the system as reliable as it can be. What, what we're doing isn't working, what can we do to change it and ultimately having more available capacity. Uh, to cover these supply shortages is what, what they came up with, so ultimately they. They made it a little more restrictive and a little more challenging on how everyone is going to be able to meet those expectations, but. Um, if and when it's met, it'll be a more robust system and, and certainly more reliable. But I think there's going to be some significant chance, the challenges uh for. All the utilities across, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know the capacity position of a lot of utilities, but I would expect that. No one is setting on just. A huge percentage of available capacity, so. The capacity market is something that I know Andrew's keeping a close eye on uh in preparation, but. You know, we'll, we'll work through it and do everything we can to make sure that our numbers. Reflect as high of an output and availability as we can and then we'll see where we fall and then we'll have to make some decisions on. If we are short, how we want to go about satisfying that shortage and.
A utility that has no generation, they have zero capacity, how do they, how do they, how does that work?
So typically the, the utilities that don't have generators that they own have. Some sort of purchase power agreement or some sort of jointly owned unit or. They've got, you know, like a KMEA or something that's responsible for. The capacity for that town. So any of the, a, a, any of the load in SPP is accounted for by some. Um, capacity requirement, a lot of those. Small townships and co-ops and things like that, they're going to say if they don't have their own generation, they're going to satisfy those requirements by. Whatever, purchase power agreements, uh paper capacity. Just, you know, jointly owned combustion turbines, things like that, but. But that's something that, you know, KMEA, I know they have a lot of. Small utilities and small townships and cities that they're responsible for and. They're, 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 they'll be tasked with ensuring that they've got enough capacity to cover their load, just like we are.
And uh, what is our current capacity and uh average capacity and uh. Do you expect that we'll, we'll maintain that same capacity over uh after this goes into effect?
That is for sure a number I should have brought to this, uh. I will have to get that to you. I don't know it off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Don, you ready?
Evening, morning.
Morning or good evening.
So as, as Jaren shared, um, his group came out and shared with, with my team out, out at nearmen. And uh this was part of the presentation, part of the training too, and what I wanted to get across to my team was just how can we affect this and how can we. Make our units more competitive and then to, you know, how are we providing value even though we're not running? I think that's some of the perception at the plant too is, you know, if we're not running, we're not, we're not doing anything, but. As we'll, we'll talk about, you know, as Jaren just talked about capacity, just got off that subject, you know. The unit being there and being available is of tremendous value to BPU, um, and so just uh. Something that needs to, you know, needs to be shared with the group is, is take some time to, to come to that realization and to, to be able to understand it for. For the team as we, Jaren talked, a lot of new, new employees, um, and then the, the market is new. I guess it's, you know, ten years old now, but the way that they're dispatching nearmen certainly has been different here in the last few years. So as far as what we can do to be more competitive, I just shared a little bit on unit offers. And what, what a unit offer is, is what we tell SPP that we can do with our units. So what can nearmen do as far as max output? What's the lowest output we can get to and how fast we can ramp within that? Um, and then how much it costs. So the cost comes down to a dollars per megawatt. And it is only variable O and M, so it's only the variable piece and that's, I think that's a lot of what the uh. Um, what the team grapples with a little bit too, when they go out there and they, you know, they, they work on the equipment. And they, you know, maybe put a new motor in, a new pump in, but that's, that's fixed O and M. Them themselves being labor expense, that's fixed O and M, that doesn't go into the unit offer, so that's, that's not something that. Um, affects the unit offer either way. Um, as far as unit offers for the CTs, it's almost, almost entirely fuel. So that's the only way we can affect that is with unit efficiency, if we can increase the unit efficiency. There's a few levers to pull there with the gas turbines, just being able to uh, to make sure they're operating as efficiently as, as they're designed. Uh, there's a few more levers to pull with, with nearmen with the coal plant and just the way they operate it, how lean they're burning. Um, how, how much water usage is, how much chemical usage is. Um, so what we're trying to do while we're operating the plant or what we, you know, what, what the guys can do and how they can affect this is to increase the efficiency. And then reduce the amount of inputs uh beyond that being reagents for our uh environmental controls. Uh, chemicals for all, all the water systems. And then the, the other items I've listed there, the ramp rates and the max output and operating range, those are the different variables that. Um, that we can work with, a lot, lot in that operating range is how um. How low we can operate the unit and that goes into the, the coal plant quite a bit. Uh, because these coal plants were built to run base loaded, you know, at the top all the time. Um, and so no, not a lot of thought was put into how low can you operate it and maintain it and it's uh, becomes a real challenge. Um, but there are, there are things we can do just operationally to get better at how, how low we operate the unit. Uh, and then there are, you know, capital investments and other investments we can make that can increase that operating range. But these are the kind of things that the, you know, the folks that operate the plant every day can help us out with a lot because they. They know those, the limits of the machine uh more so than, than we do that aren't, aren't at the board every day. Uh, watching the equipment run, so trying to get our, our teams involved and, and coming up with ideas and. As much as this exercise was to, to educate my team, it was also, you know, to generate ideas and to pull ideas out of that team too. As much as this exercise was to, to educate my team, it was also, you know, to generate ideas and to pull ideas out of that team too. On the resource adequacy side, uh, the opportunities there, really what it comes down to is, is reliability. Um, and Jaren talks about the two, two different seasons. Uh, definitely those periods are when we do not want the unit to come down. We don't wanna have those forced outages. There's both forced D rates. Um, and that's again where we'll get into this, um, strategic. Planning around outages. We're going into an outage tomorrow on, on Nierman. Um, and the idea there is that we get everything. Up to, up to par that we can during that outage. And so that we make it through that whole season without, without having that, that forced outage. So if we have something, a piece of equipment that we think is gonna last, you know, two months, we don't wanna take that outage in July. We wanna get that replaced. Within the next few weeks, make that whole operating season. And then we have time to, uh, you know, plan another outage in the, in those two months in the fall. Get that taken care of and get again prepared for the winter season.
So tomorrow starts the spring outage.
With spring outage for Nierman, tomorrow morning, yes.
Yeah, and how long will that, is that gonna be?
It's four weeks.
Four weeks?
Yes. Uh, other things that help us there, just to increase focus on inspection and, and our preventative maintenance program. So. Knowing the equipment, knowing, you know, strategically how often, how, how long a pump lasts, how long a motor lasts, the things that. Uh, we can see operationally and, and be able to, uh, somewhat forecast those failures. And so that we can take care of the equipment before it, uh, causes any issues. So the, it's the way we, you know, that we can positively affect our, our resource adequacy. And, you know, in, in the end, it's about. Performing well with those performance, uh, based re- resource adequacy and, uh, being able to. Get as close as we can to our, to our max output being accredited. So ongoing efforts, uh, training, which we've already started, we have already completed the supervisor's training. Uh, after the outage, we're gonna roll that out to the entire staff. Uh, it'll be a similar presentation. We've, uh. You know, discussed some changes from the supervisors, kinda gave us some hints on, on things to focus on, other things to, uh. Maybe dig into a little deeper with, with the rest of the staff. So it's really good to start that out, the supervisors and get their feedback. Um, as far as communication, um, my team communicates, uh, we have a phone call every day, uh, at eight o'clock with, with Jaren's team. Uh, we talk about, you know, what's happening that day as far as the unit's running. Uh, we talk about, uh, you, you know, the strategic outages and, and what we could do. In the next few weeks, when, you know, he, Jaren's team can look at, look at forecasts, both load and, and win forecast throughout all SPP and tell us, you know. You know, next, next week would be a good week to take an outage or next week would be a good week to be ready to run. So. That's, that's the kind of things we kind of keep those lines of, uh, communication open and it's been a big advantage for us. Uh, then, uh, also just, uh, operational strategies that I've, I've talked about already. And, and the outage coordination was a, is a big deal between, uh, Jaren's group and mine. That's all I had for this evening. Does anyone have any questions?
I have one quick one and not sure who the appropriate person is, but we talked a little bit about the, um, planned outage for Nierman. Do we have similar plans for the turbines as well, like CT two and three? And is it same? We approach those in the shoulder months as well?
Yeah, definitely. Uh, we do normally do our CT outages more in the fall. So our planned outages for the CTs are in the fall this year. Uh, but they, they're the same way. And then their gas turbines are just a little easier in that, in that regard because we can, uh. Start them up and shut them down so much quicker. So we can take a, an eight hour outage and, and be back online that evening. So. But yeah, that we, we treat them all the same.
Thanks.
I got the capacity number.
Great.
So we're right, we're right around the seven hundred currently.
Seven hundred thousand?
Yes, and we just, over this past year, um, we actually sold a hundred and fifty megawatts capacity. Uh, in it, it to Nextera. So that was something that, uh, Andrew's team had worked out. But, uh, right now currently total. The previous way, the, the current way we calculate capacity is about seven hundred. So you figure. On a five hundred megawatt, uh, peak, hundred and fifteen percent would be about five seventy-five, I think, my math's right, somewhere in there. So. And our, our peak last year was in the four eighties. So we haven't had a, a peak over five hundred for a few years. So, you know. You, you look at the numbers changing each year, but it's based off your, your annual peak load. So we've got some wiggle room there and, and, uh.
Like yesterday, what did we put in for today, the day ahead? As far as what our capacity was, what we can.
Yeah, so we put in, we offered in all of our, we, we offer in all of our available generation into the day ahead. At whatever their current, and, and there weren't any limitations. So we offered in, uh, Nierman, the CTs, all of our renewables. So. When everything's available, we're, we're submitting that to SPP and they're dispatching it accordingly. But, yeah.
And so they didn't, they didn't need any of it. So we're just.
Yeah, we had CT four around the day.
Yeah, Nierman, Nierman is on today. CT four is run continually for, I believe, I believe two days. And CT two and three ran last night for a couple hours.
Yeah, so just three days ago, uh, I just happened to look and we were. We were generating about a hundred and sixty more megawatts than our load was. So at that point, you're offsetting your entire load costs. And then bringing in the revenue on each one of those additional hundred and sixty megawatts from the market. So.
And puts a total capacity around seven hundred and, you know, peak around five hundred. We're not talking about with those new standards we have to meet. Desperately needing to find new generation to hit the hundred and fifteen, we're talking about maximizing our opportunities in the market, making sure we're just as efficient as we can be.
Right.
Financially.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the big hit will be that seventy percent decrease in our wind.
Yeah.
Uh, that'll be a significant hit. Um, but. You know, when, when that goes into effect, like I said, we'll just have to see where, where we fall. But. We've, we've got some room, uh, currently, uh, to the point where, you know, Andrew's group was actually able to. Leverage some of that capacity and hopefully we're in that same position in twenty-six, twenty-seven, or we've got some that we can. You know, satisfy our requirements and then.
So Jaren, when they say it starts in twenty-six, so they're looking at the seven years prior.
They're, they're going, they're going back. Uh, that's just when they think they'll have. They're mainly just trying to give everybody an opportunity to.
Get ready.
Evaluate where they're at and determine what they'll need.
Okay.
But they're going back, you know, seven years from.
Whenever.
Whenever, I mean, currently they're looking at seven years of data.
Seven consecutive years?
Yeah.
Consecut.
Yeah.
So we'll have the opportunity to sort of maximize the way we do things to that formula for the last two or three years. But they're gonna be pulling from before anyone knew these standards were coming, right?
Yeah.
But then presumably every year moving forward, you're gonna have more years where you've known this is the set of rules and. The collaboration that, you know, you all spoke to tonight will have occupied more and more of those seven years.
Correct.
Any other questions for the board? So, I mean, we've had an ongoing conversation about how do we, how do we track? What the market conditions are, how do, how are we gonna be more responsive? Uh, to those changes and also lessen the impact on our, on our customers too, you know, knowing. How we've seen our ERT go up and down quite a bit over the past few years about, I think about this time last year. Gas wasn't as low, it was coming out of some. Probably some, uh, really high gas periods that was, that may have broken some records. You know, I know we're coming down out of, out of those high, high prices, but. But, uh, but now it's got the complete opposite effect now. So, I mean, so, so that just shows how, how the market changes and how we have to change with it. The other thing is I wanted to make sure we continue. Have, have this conversation about, you know, not just SPP and how we're generating, uh. We are almost. We've almost completed our generation assessment and we're getting closer to. Needing to come back to the board to talk about our integrated resource plan. So trying to kind of set the stage for that conversation later too. And my hope is, uh. Unless there's something that I don't see coming up, you know, hopefully we'll have that plan in place by, by late summer. You know, but we knew, but what, but I do need to come back to the board and also, uh. Get your input into that. And then there's the public hearings, just gonna have to follow that too. So, uh, so we're, we're moving in that direction. I just wanted to. Really get the board more up to speed on kind of here's what we're dealing with, with the change in markets, all the other things and. And, uh, and with you in a better position to have that conversation about, about the, uh, integrated resource plan when we do bring it back to you.
Integrated resource plan will be dealt with from the report from Black, Black and Beach.
Yeah, we had, we, we hired Black and Beach, uh, so there's two parts. Assessing where our generation is today. And then the integrated resource plan is what, what is out there on the horizon, the BP you need to look like? And how do we go about planning out our resources, generation resources down the road?
Including the change with the SPP.
Including all the changes. I mean, the, I mean, there's the, not just the SPP, but the environmental landscape, landscape, everything out there that, that's gonna impact our operation. We have to pay close, close attention to that.
Thank you.
Yeah, and this is, this is something that Maurice was pretty closely engaged in too. So he made sure that Black and Beach. Really looks closely at that in the IRP, the, the new performance based stuff and. The capacity accreditation and things like that. So that's something they're taking into account when they do the study. So, I mean, he. With it, with our risk management policy, that was one of the things that he ended up bumping up towards the top of the list. Uh, from a risk perspective is the, the new performance based stuff. So it's a priority and it's something that. Um, Black and Beach is certainly considering in, in their, in their, uh. Now RP that they're doing for us and, and their evaluation of our current generators.
Rose, you had a question?
Um, when does our current contract with SPP expire? Does anybody know?
Uh, I don't have that answer here, uh.
Couple of years, five years, it, I mean, ballpark, I mean.
I don't know.
I, I, let me follow back up.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll follow back up to, to the whole board. Any other things before, before we move away from this topic? Okay, thank you, Jaren.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen.
Hey, Jaren, if you could stand, stay here just for a second. Next on the agenda, on the agenda is the KMEA appointment, uh. You have, should have a resolution in front of you. It's basically reappointing Jaren. Per T to be, uh, this number two director at KMEA, Jeremy is number one. Uh, and Jaren is the, is the second director. And then we also have an alternate position, but this is for, for Jaren's position to get renewed based on the KMEA bylaws.
I moved to approve resolution five two nine six.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, uh, roll call please.
Roll call. Parker?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
Waits?
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Quick question, there's, uh, just for, uh, people that are online and that. Can you explain a little bit what KMEA stands for, what they do? Uh, how we, how we fit in to that? Cause as I, what we talked in the last segment was a KMEA balances or does capacity for. Smaller utilities that don't have generation. How do we, how do we fit in all that?
Yeah, at KMEA, uh, Kansas Municipal Energy Agency, they're. They're tasked with, um, just like we talked about, they've got, um. Whether it be smaller co-ops or towns or that don't necessarily have the resources or the assets, but they've got load. Especially in, in the SPP integrated marketplace, being able to serve that load. And have the capacity to cover the load as if they were their own independent utility. But they handle, you know, any of the, any of the regulatory impacts potentially for these different load areas, um. Ensure that they're complying with the same things that we have to comply with. There's, there's just not the representation or. Staff or necessarily utility in a lot of these areas. So they represent them.
What does KMEA do for the BPU? We have generation. So we don't rely on them as these smaller eight hundred small utilities around the state. That don't have generation.
We've, we've provided generation to some of their members. I don't believe we currently have any contracts in place, but we've, in the past, that's where our relationship came from. We've. We, in the past, we've provided megawatts. Previous to the day two market, we had agreements with KMEA to provide megawatts from. Nierman to. One of their members. So that's.
Where do they get their, where does, KMEA doesn't have generation. Where do they get their? Capacity or generation from? They don't get it from us.
Jointly owed units, purchase power agreements, things like that. And I, KMEA may own.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of, a lot of those small town, small towns that are also members are also, they also have agreements with Evergy. Cause Evergy is the, is the investor on that serves close to one third of the state now of Kansas and, uh. And then they do wrap around a lot of those small towns that don't have generators. And, uh, they may have, uh. Standby generators, some of them do, you know, for. Times when they need to operate them, but, uh, for all intents and purposes, they'll contract and KMEA is also there. Helping them secure other power contracts in addition to, to Evergy, so.
I'm just trying to figure out where we fit into KME, where we fit into KMEA.
Uh, so they help us a lot, a lot on the state level when it comes to, uh, state policy and things like that along with KMU. Uh, there is, uh, another group called KPP. That's the, that's in Kansas that we don't have any membership there, but, uh, but, uh. Uh, they do help us out in Topeka on, on legislature that come, that may come up. They, uh, are certainly there in Washington when we go, uh, to APPA.
So they're basically, we use that, they're, we use them as a lobby, as basically lobby.
They, they, they assist us, yeah.
Assist.
Right, so.
State and federal lobby.
And federal and state. So, you know, we, we know we have Kimberly. Kimberly's contract is split between us, KMEA and KMU. So not one of us are paying, you know, her full freight. But, uh, the contract is split. So, and, you know, when it comes to things across the, uh. Across the state of Kansas. We certainly have, uh, some influence. I'm, I'll say some with our local delegation. But BP don't have that much influence across the state of Kansas with rural, rural Kansas. So. That's where they really provide greater value to us.
And, and we share policy concerns, right? I mean, the, our, the membership of, of KMEA or their represent, you know. Bodies they represent and, and we share similar concerns, right? We share similar issues that. You know, there's obviously strength in numbers. Um, and as, as a board member on that organization, I presume we have some influence on pushing policy.
We do.
That that group would be able to, to push as well, you know?
That is a better way of describing than I did. So thank you, yeah.
Well, I just listened to what you said and I thought, well, what it sounds like.
People that are listening and for, you know, new, new board members and even for myself, just to get a better feel for what KMEA is.
So when, when we have these conversations, I mean, they'll tell us, uh, and, and I, I've acknowledged that too, yes. You guys do a pretty good job in Washington DC. There's not much we can do. There's not much we can do to help you there. But you really need us in Kansas. And uh, and uh, so when you think about. The energy matters, uh, you know, water matters, utility matters across the state of Kansas. That can have sometimes an even bigger impact on what we do in our, in our state. That's where, uh, that's where they bring the most, most value to us. Is us having, you know, the numbers to be able to talk about what. What's impacting municipal utilities, but just the policies across the state of Kansas and what. And some things that impact us may not mean that much to a small town. But when you start adding up small towns, yes, it may impact them equally too. Hopefully that answers.
It's, it's.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, because uh. Uh, I did speak with Rose after I spoke with you, so she gave me that insight, so thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Thank you, Don. Uh. I just have a couple of things. One, uh. You know, we did start our uh, in-person meetings with the public last week as. As we stated, so. This is uh. Kind of a soft launch, so we have had. I think a couple of people or so. Two or three come in, we've got some scheduled for this week. So not in. Not anticipating a, a lot. Uh, but we'll see, you know, at least not a lot initially, but we'll see where we go. But I did want to, want to know that. Want you to know that this is our second week that we're in now, so. And then uh, Chris handed me a note as a reminder that why not Economic Development Council is having their spring quarterly. Event on April the tenth. And we're going to be meeting at the New Legends two sixty seven apartments. Out there in Village West, if you wanna. If you want to attend that, let Chris know, uh. And I know some attend at the electric vehicle. Plant out that Turner diagonal. I think uh. Couple of months ago when we met out there, maybe three. So, but if you want to go, uh, if you want to. Take a look at the new Legends two sixty seven, if you want to attend the one that Economic Development Meeting. We'll certainly make sure we get you registered and you're welcome to attend. It's all, uh, I gotta get used to the new. So we just covered the nice agenda, uh. And for the public, uh. Does anybody in the public have any comments based on the agenda that we've covered tonight? Uh, you, you need to probably come over here so that, so that the microphone can pick you up. And you, and you have. Three minutes.
Three, three minutes. To discuss topics that were. On the agenda.
Mike, how close to me?
Much closer.
Okay, I think that's good. I have to restate my name and everything again.
Why don't you go ahead and, and your, your name again?
Okay, this is Louise Lynch. Um, Kansas City, Kansas. So I had a. Few questions and some. Um, concerns that the community has given. One of my concerns, because we have these. Costs going up and we have, you know, anticipating the summer rates, um. Energy use going up.
This portion of the agenda is to make comments about things that we're on. On, if, if you want to address.
No, we're talking about the summer rates and we're talking about how it raises in the, in the. Summer as opposed to when the winter and the summer. And so that's what. I'm about to ask about. Is that okay? Okay, thanks. So my, my question is in regards to that. As the costs are going up and, you know, we have all these other fees that have been added. I know that there is help. For people who are poverty level below. Is there any help uh, going to be given with these high? Uh, air conditioning rate that we're going to have for those that. Are above the poverty level. But have, you know, such expenditures, medical or whatever, that um. Can't make those rates or. Anticipating high air conditioning or medical expenses from electrical. Um, so that's one of the things I wanted to ask, but another thing that. Um, I've had community, several community members this week asked about. Is in regards to the Nierman plant, uh, not the Nierman plant, but the plant that is closed. And their concerns were that. They have full staff showing up. And getting paid. And I know we talked a little bit about that.
Excuse me. Again, this portion of the agenda.
But didn't we just talk about that?
Is, no. It's, if you have comments on the.
But didn't he talk?
Energy market uh. Trends or on the preliminary financial uh.
But wasn't he talking about Tom and when, um, the people that are there and why they're there and not there? And the cost of that, that's what I'm talking about, because that's what he talked about in the presentation. Did he not just talk about that?
Uh, no, we didn't talk about staffing.
Well, didn't he say why the people needed to be there and what they were doing and how that? Um, the cost of that was? Didn't I just hear that?
We talked about Nierman Power Plant, which is still operational.
Right, but didn't one of the gentlemen there just talk about? The people that are, why they needed them staffed?
Yeah.
And what, okay, so that's what I'm talking about, the staffing of that plant while it shut down. So some of the concerns the community had. So I would think that would be valid. Correct? So what their validity is, is that they're asking. That they understand that that's not what's happening there. And so I'd like you to address that. They're saying that what's happening there is that people. Are doing other things than that and that we're paying out. Huge amounts of money. Um, for those that are not doing those things full time.
Thirty second.
Don't have the experience. So I understand if you need them there to perform a duty. But. Those that are not. Are we, can we not just furlough them so we can keep the cost down?
I can assure you that uh, the people we have working at our, at our power plant are people that we need. Working at our power plant and those individuals are working and staying busy.
Okay, so, so the community bring you the concerns of those of the other?
Beyond.
I don't know that the community knows that much about how our power plants operates, but.
Okay, does it have any other information? Can they bring that to you?
Uh, yeah, they can, they.
Great, thank you. That's all I wanted to ask.
Thank you. So that's, is there anyone else? So anyone online? Okay, thank you. So, Mr. President, I'll turn it back over to you.
Board comments. Uh, Rose? You have any comments?
Um. I have a, more of a question than a comment. May I ask a question, Mr. President? Um. Something I have not, well, I don't think the board has heard about in a little bit of, a time. How are? The meetings going with the UG on the bifurcation of the bill?
Uh, I'm gonna bring that back to the board. Uh. I, I would say this, uh. Uh. The UG has made a decision that they're not meeting with us. And we have gone several weeks now. Without meeting. Uh, the last conversation that I had with them. Or that we had with them is uh. That they uh. Didn't like any of the options that we, we offered to them. And. They basically wanted to keep, to keep everything at status quo, but then uh. But then they did talk about, uh. They asked us if we would con, consider. Continuing to operate as is, and then they would pay us some type of fee that we never got around to talking about or agreeing to. To keep things as it is. So I told them that I was. Not comfortable with that because that really meant the UG was still completely. Removed from the public. And all of the ongoing things that we deal with. And they, uh, they become, will become even more isolated. If they are not uh, billing and receiving and uh, handling these customer issues themselves. So. I've had conversations with the county administrator. Uh, the plan is, well, and then they came back and said. At our last meeting that they want to, they don't want to look at any of our options, because his, his comment to me or question to me was. Could BPU, that they. That we continue to send the bills out, use the BPU billing system, send the bills out. And then they receive the bills back and then, and then, and the payments. And I said, we can make that work. Uh, when you got to the staff level, they didn't like. That agreement that. That we had October. Of last year between me and the county administrator. And. They were slow to, to. Meet with us. They came to. A meeting for. Maybe a month, if, if, if not that, if maybe a month, three weeks. And then they sent us an email saying they will not be attending any more meetings.
Oh, my God.
At the staff level or Mr. Johnston?
That's at the staff level. So Mr. Johnson is aware of that. So I am planning on following back up with them.
I think one of the problems is the mayor's been on a leave of absence for the last month and a half or two months.
Well, we've had continuity of government. I mean, it's not like, not like we're not.
Yeah. So they, they told me that they wanted to go and uh. And.
What, what department is this, the unified government that's? Work, that's not working with us, but was?
Well, it's, 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 it's not one department, it's kind of a. Cross section of different departments, finance, public works, uh, IT, technology, uh. Let me, let me gather all that, because I was planning on having Jerry come back and give one, give a, give a full update as to where we are, uh. But they did say they wanted to go and uh. Install their own billing system and I said. Well. Okay. I don't know that that's necessary, because I think you have the means to be able to bill people. Do the same system that you have, that you collect real estate, property taxes. If you get a speeding ticket, I mean, there is the online. Application that the UG has to be able to certainly. Put uh. There are charges that's on the bill. In that application and bill people directly there, but they wanted to pursue a, a different billing system. So the conversation that I want to have now is, is uh. Okay, you're, you started off your budget. Process. There's a billing system there, and if you're going to continue to go down that road. Then. Here is the fee that I think you should be owing BPU until you can at least get the billing system up and running. And then. And then we totally separate. And uh, so I've sat down and uh. I've looked at, I looked at our full customer service calls and uh. I think, you know, it's debatable, but they should be paying us. Either twenty, twenty-five or thirty-three percent of all, of all our costs. Based on the revenue we're bringing in compared to the revenue we're collecting for them.
Okay.
So in the short run, they uh. The short answer is. They've just simply quit meeting with us.
Okay, so. Put, put it another way. Um. The local government staff. Stop working for the people of this. Of, of Kansas City, Kansas.
Uh, the, the unified government staff quit working with the team that we had assembled at BPU, yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. President, do it, do we have any joint meeting scheduled? We haven't met since July. And I know that was the first time in eleven years, whatever it was, but.
To my knowledge, there are no meetings scheduled.
Can we request one with the elected officials?
We can.
Thank you. I'm sure. I just. Think we should request one.
Okay.
Is that he be, needs to be in motion?
No.
No.
Okay, great.
So I have reached out, uh. And asked if we can restart the quarterly meetings and I've gotten no response.
Yeah.
So.
I, I appreciate the update. I, I uh.
And I was planning on bringing that back and, and I think staff knows that, because we've had that conversation on. I gotta get the board an update on where we are. This can't just simply go on forever, but I, I do. I do want to. Talk to the county administrator to see where they are budget wise and, and see, okay. If this is where you're gonna go, then. At least let's talk about how much you pay BPU for all these billing services we're providing for you. Until we can come up with a more permanent solution.
Okay. I, I appreciate the update. Um. Sorry, David, I, I know you were holding out hope for that. Um. I, Mr. President, I don't have any other comments.
You have better than I did, though.
Mary?
Um, I just want to say thanks to Jaren and Dawn for. Information overload for me, but um, thanks for catching me up on that and um. Since we had a s- small discussion about the UG, I did want to say that they're. Trying to bring their budget out to different communities and um. If anybody lives in Rosedale like I do, it's Saturday. On uh, this coming Saturday at the RDA building from. Uh, three to five.
I just also want to thank staff for the presentations and um. I think that will be helpful as we lead into. Uh, some of the, the conversations coming this summer. It's, it's, as a new board member, fascinating to learn about the components and. All the layers of regulation that uh, we're, you know, trying to thread those needles. So I'm appreciative of that work and, and the opportunity just to dig into that more as board members.
Uh, yeah, I, I'm a bit frustrated as well, and I did. Mention to you and you said you would give it one more opportunity to try to meet, because I expressed the importance of. Right. Of us maintain that communication and unfortunately that uh, has uh. Met with a roadblock that uh, it's gonna have to be addressed. Um, and I will make sure that, that it is addressed uh, in a, in a very, very nice way to where. Where there uh, is some type of communication and, and um. Um, Mr. President, I'll be in touch with you because I don't want to speak, you know, uh. Of myself, but I want to make sure that you're involved in, in making sure we move that needle. Um. I am uh, uh, want to also report that I did attend the Economic Development and Finance Committee. Uh, and in that meeting, uh, BPU was addressed regarding uh. Construction out on uh, I believe Delaware and Hundred and Fourteenth, I believe, where, where the new construction is being held and they needed an extension. Because of the, the uh, delays. Uh, uh, with the uh, uh, power of being, not being out there and then because of the relationship and I understood that with the city. Uh, trying to get that, so that, that was another roadblock, but they asked for a year extension. And I did vote along with the other committee members to extend that one, one year, give them an opportunity to complete their work. Um. That was the only thing I think that, that related to us that was addressed in that particular meeting. Um. Also, um. Um, want to express my gratitude to uh, Darren and John, uh, uh, Don for your, your presentation today. Also to Lori, uh, thank you so much for your. Presentation again with the financials, uh, and I will be uh, hoping to meet with you soon. Uh, because I have a few things that I, that I want to make sure that those cobwebs are cleared out of my mind. Uh, with, with those finances. So thank you so much for your presentation. Also Louise, uh, thank you for your, for your presence. Uh, at our meeting and uh. Um, and I know a, a lot of times we get frustrated as, as community members, uh, trying to address things, uh. Uh, with um, the entities that are supposed to represent us. Uh, and the parameters surrounding that, but I thank you for hanging in there and uh, um, uh, doing that, uh, for us. Yes, yes, man. Um. Um, and Ms. Hall, if you're still listening as well, thank you so much. Uh, and hopefully we can, we can get something done regarding uh, this uh. Backlog or this logs, yeah, with the city, uh, relationship and communication, because that was one of the things that I, I was really uh. Adamant about uh, and presenting during my campaign, so. Yeah, we, 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 we will definitely work on that. Thank you so much.
Senator Haley?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, and uh, I appreciate the comments that have been made preceding mine. Um, mine, of course, is to reiterate, because well, first we do want to thank the review by staff. By Lori, Don, Jaren for going over those points and certainly educating me further, uh, far further. And I think Mary called it information overload, but I'm doing my best to digest some of it. I appreciate that. It's quite an education and um. Then also to reiterate what's been said, we have really, I mean, it's been an initiative that we're all concerned about, especially with. The escalating fees we have that we're collecting uh, on behalf of the unified government, like the stormwater. fee, and that there is a breakdown in communication. I don't know. I'm trying to work with and will be working with, with your permission, um, President Groneman, and, uh, to reach out to the council members, especially those two, uh, new ones that I certainly worked to see there to ensure that we have a connection between our staff on completing what has been started, uh, to have a bifurcation of the bill. And there's, there is no, uh, I, I don't know how long they wanna delay it. But, um, I don't know, the taxes have come up, you know, our property taxes or appraisals are up. And, um, I just don't want us any further at our utility to continue to bear the brunt or the onus of having these ridiculous, um, fees or taxes of the UG without some accountability and transparency. So I, with your permission, I would reach out to the commission. I know again, that as you mentioned, the Mayor Garner will be returning, I think on the fifteenth from his surgery, um, uh, and, and coming back. Uh, though Mayor Pro Tem Burrows, I think is receptive. Finally, let me ask, I have a question, uh, regarding the dormant facilities. I know that we've had them let, is there an update on that from Mr. Johnson? Or, and not to prolong the meeting, but I am still interested in what are we doing? I know we put them up, um, Quandero and Call, uh, those two plants that are dormant to see what revenues have come up. It's been six months now or more, and I just haven't heard anything else. We haven't heard, to my knowledge, anything else about where they are. And I'd like to know what's happening with that and how those contracts might be looking.
Okay, so we don't have a contract, uh, per se, uh, that I'm, that I'm entertaining. Uh, we did go through the RAP process and, uh, looked at three of the proposals very closely. And, uh, so for Quandero, there's been nothing to surface that, uh, that to me or the team makes sense in pushing forward. I mean, we'll, we're still, we did, we did ask them for some counter proposals if they were, if they were interested in bringing back some, some alternative proposals. But with what they, uh, have commer, uh, previously submitted, uh, uh, one we were very interested in is just not cost effective for us to proceed forward with that. Uh, same thing on Call, uh, and I, and we may take a look at Call a little bit differently and, uh, and take a look at, uh, at what would it take to remove the structures and, uh, and, and at least approach it from that angle. I mean, we're looking at both of them, uh, from the standpoint of repurposing both sites and turning it into, uh, taking down the, the structures and then also dealing with the, uh, environmental concerns that may be there. And, and then also turning both locations into revenue tax generating businesses. And, uh, we're just not there yet. So, I mean, but, but, but we haven't completely walked away from it. Uh, we're gonna be meeting again to kinda read, reassess where we are. And then I'll certainly be in a better place to be, bring that back to the board to see, to talk about where we are.
Well, thank you. And similar to, I guess, the other initiative, um, I don't know if there's an opportunity to have, uh, maybe sit in on the committee, uh, the evaluation, somebody from the board, one of the, the board members to be a part of that, uh, just to lend, uh, an eager ear. Uh, I actually went by one of the plants and was surprised to see they've already begun to cut the grass. I think it was Ms. Lynch who spoke about what personnel may be there at Quandero. I don't know how many are necessary in a dormant or near dormant status that that has. And they're already out there cutting the grass. I don't know who's got the service contract for maintaining the grass of an empty power plant. But I'm sure that's a line item that, um, would probably gives us some pause. And somebody else ought to be paying that. Um, frankly, Mr. Johnson, we ought to have somebody, um, I believe that, um, is acquiring and utilizing that plant. And maybe somebody from the board can lend assistance if the president appoint, we have, you know, board members on other like policy committee and community committees. That to me is, is just a waste of resources, frankly, and a waste of revenue of income. And it's taken about a year. I brought this up, you know, when I first came on a couple of years ago. And we, I, I just would like to see a little more alacrity, a little more diligence in, in addressing it. And I just wanna share that with you that that would be something, uh, we need to do, um, with greater emphasis if we could. Um, again, I appreciate that. And if you could, maybe we could visit, you know, the next meeting again as to what that is. I know several parties are making application. I don't know your criterion. There's no one on the board who can help us to, uh, understand what you're going through. Somebody can get rid of that property, both of those properties, or have them in a meaningful way, uh, if we just have a little more diligence. But I'd appreciate that as well. Thank you again.
It's been a longstanding interest of BPU and, uh, to do something with these properties. Call, uh, certainly been vacated far longer. Uh, but, uh, we've been looking at this for, uh, at least some of Quandero, not all of Quandero, because we were still operating the coal power plant down there for a while. It is just recently, not that long ago, ceased operations down there. So. But we've been, we've been talking about this for several years, you know, over a decade for, for Call. So, I mean, these things, uh, uh, there's, 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 there's a lot of other things to consider when you're talking about repurposing a power plant. It's not, uh, it, it's not the same as some type of greenfield, uh, property that you own. And, uh, so, but there, there's a lot more complicated than that. And then because of the Quandero property and because of the Call property, it was still on the BPU ownership, we still have to maintain those properties. So even though we're not operating down there, we still have to cut the grass. We still have to maintain. We still have to make sure that, that there's security down there, maintain, uh, the properties in the best possible way, even though they're not generating power.
Where are those reflected in our budget? I mean, if you have some line items that, you know, with the maintenance, uh, costs are for the dormant plants, um, I'd like to get a chance to see those at some point. I was amazed at how great the grass looks. And yes, it does have to be maintained, but I wonder what we are spending, um, from, you know, our budget to, to do something like that when certainly somebody else should. And I'm surprised that it's been, I thought I was the first one to ask about it a couple of years ago, what we're doing with it. I kinda concerns me that it's been going on longer than that and still there's been no resolution.
It's, it's a complicated matter that all utilities deal with. So it's not, it's not as simple as, uh, as one may imagine. So. But, you know, just rest assured, we are, we are moving, mov- moving through the process to try to determine the best, determine the best use for both locations.
Sir, Bill, I am so impressed with the minds I've met, uh, at BPU with the staff yourself and the staff. I, I really am, and I mean that sincerely, not in jest. I genuinely do. I find it difficult to believe that good minds like we have, like yours and the staff couldn't have worked this out, um, if it just wasn't a matter of urgency on your part. And I hope you will turn your attention to it further quickly, please.
I will. And we'll, we'll, we'll report back, uh, on, uh, what some of the expenses are that we have at Quandero and, uh, and kinda where we are in terms of, uh, collecting bids and trying to determine the next steps.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, uh, my comments are gonna basically be, uh, to thank the staff for their reports this evening. As, as they're very informative. And also I need, I would like to request from the board, uh, what you would like. I'm gonna draft a letter to the UG requesting a meeting. What would you like to talk about other than the, uh, issues surrounding the bill? Does anybody have anything?
Did we just email you that, Tom?
Ask, ask.
Oh, individually?
No, it would be a serial communication if each of you did that.
That's right.
Could she send it, could they send it to you?
It would then, if I sent it to you, it'd just be delivery. There's not an easy way around it. I'm sorry.
Since that is the main focus, there are some other things that I, that I mentioned that I'd like to be addressed by, by the commission, particularly as it regards saving, uh, money for our ratepayers. Um, um, and that's the expenses that, uh, the UG, G, one is the, the billing. The other one is the expense of the water and electrical usage, of which they pay no money for. Uh, that, that is what, and, and I'm, 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 I'm really concerned about, you know, um, uh, people that, um, are in situations that I've been in, um, that have difficulty paying their bills. Um, and, um, the UG, um, has not, uh, and maybe they're gonna do it with this budget. I don't know. But they didn't do it this last budget as it, as regards to the, uh, pilot and the, the expense of the pilot. They, they had the opportunity to make the pilot lower and they refail to, to make that pilot lower. Uh, and, and, uh, this was a commitment that they made that they did not keep years ago. And we're still dealing with the same costs and, uh, it's been, and we're being blamed as, as utility. We're being blamed because we're the ones that have to bill our customers forward. So that is another frustrating thing that, that, uh, I'd, I'd like to be, I'd like to see addressed.
Um, I, I, Stevie took, took some of mine, I think. Um, but, yeah, no, I, I think that, um, I, I think maybe, you know, overall focus, I guess from my perspective, of course, is the bifurcation of the bill. But to, to Stevie's point, um, what, what are we, how are we, what are we doing to gain efficiencies, um, from the services that we're providing, you know, to unified government? And I understand that, you know, that, you know, they, in the presentation last July, they, they presented some, some data um, about some in-kind services that they also provide to BPU, I believe in maybe in wastewater. Um, but I, I, I think we need to, to have that discussion because we all put out a bunch of data last July and there's been no movement on literally anything. And so, um, it's fine to put the data out there, but what are we gonna do about it? And, you know, it, i- if I'm not mistaken, the pilot that we collect, the percentage that we collect is based on our revenues. Is that right? And do those revenues include the, uh, fees that we collect for the unified government? Or do they only, are they only BPU related fees?
It's, it's, it's based off BPU gross revenue, uh.
And, and certainly our collection of their fees is not our revenue, right? Okay, so.
So our collection of, of the charges that's on the bill, uh, this, we just collect those charges and pass it directly.
Related to electric and water?
Really, women, yeah, ask, ask me again.
Okay. So the pilot fee, which today sits at eleven point nine percent. Do we, do we collect, do we apply that percentage to only electric and water related fees that BPU charges?
We, it goes beyond that. So if you, if BPU is, uh, is providing service for construction purposes and things like that, our engineers are drawing up estimates for, then they'll also include taxes and pilot as part of that too. So if, and as long as, as long as, as, uh, any activity, anything that BPU does to generate revenue for itself, uh, the pilot is also included with that.
Okay. Uh, well, I, I mean, Tom, again, la- last July, there was a lot of, you know, pre, there was a lot of facts that were presented or at least, you know, facts that I think both sides alleged were facts that they presented. And, um, I think we need to, to determine, um, I, I think there has to be a push to, to do something about these charges, right? And so, um, if, if we believe that the in-kind services that BPU is providing to the unified government is somewhere in the neighborhood of ten million dollars, which I think that's the last number that I recall. Um, and, and Bill, I think that was in your presentation last July. What are we gonna do to rectify that?
What, what can we do? That's, all we can do is go to them and, you know, and bring it up again and say, hey, you know, you said you were gonna address this and you haven't. I mean, we, we're an entity of the, of the unified government. I mean.
Yep. I mean, I, I get it, but, but we're also the ones that are out there raising rates. Right? That affect every single, um, you know, business and, and resident here. Well, but I mean, we, we've got, you know, I mean, they've got community members, you know, residents of this community asking for property tax relief. Um, we've got, you know, residents and, and businesses that come to us and ask us for relief, um, you know, from high utility rates. And, you know, I mean, nothing's being done about the cost, nothing's being done about the expense, and we can't do anything about it. I, I mean, we can't do anything about that portion of it. How about that? I don't wanna say anything, but we can't do anything about that portion of it. And so I, I don't know. I mean.
Let me ask Ms. Lawson a question. As far as, um, uh, collecting revenue for the city, can the board refuse, uh, uh, collecting funds from the, from the municipality?
No.
Thank you very much.
There would have to be a charter order that's changed.
Charter orders, and that has, that would have to be done through our commissioners.
Right. I, I, I mean, things can change, but it has to be at the unified government level.
That's what I thought. Wanted to make sure we made that clear. Thank you very much.
I can offer a suggestion too. So let me update the numbers. Uh, that was last year and now we're into a new year. I can update that and send it to the board. So when, at least you'll have more updated numbers, you know, when we do meet with the, with the UG. Uh, and, uh, I did propose something to the UG a while back, and it was the previous administration, uh, and also to the current administration for the electric and water usage. You know, when the UG goes into a budget, you know, make a determination of what works best. And I, I know what, which one they'll choose, but over a five or 10-year period, start budgeting dollars to start paying BPU for this, for the service, okay? And then, so if it is a five-year period, pay one-fifths, two-fifths, three-fifths as you go through those budgets until you become a full paying customer like everybody else. Uh, and if the UG does do that, then that would be more than enough revenue to offset future rate increases. And I'm not sure that we would have had, or I know we wouldn't have had an any double rate increase if they were paying for their usage now.
Yeah, and, and Tom, you know, I know, I know how this sounds. I mean, I, I hear it. I know how this sounds. Um, you know, and I understand, and, and I don't think anybody on this board wants this to be adversarial in any way. But, I mean, we need to problem solve this. And if, if, if we, we have to figure out a way to problem solve this because, you know, all of us are here because of the people of this community. All of the commissioners are there because of the people of this community. I mean, we are all elected officials. And, you know, I guess in my view, i- if we're not solving the problems that, that are at the forefront of our community's minds and, and the forefront of most, most of the community members that all of us hear from are cost. The cost of living in this community. And these things are directly related to those costs, right? And so I, I don't want this to be an unproductive session. But, but I do think that we need to, you know, perhaps, um, approach them with, we, we need to problem solve for this. And so.
I think communication is really key, how we communicate.
Sure.
Just, you know, everybody has their backup against the UG, against us, and we're not going anywhere. So, you know, how, I think I heard Jaren say that was the first part of his presentation was to communicate from both parties. So that, that Rose is right. It can't be adversarial because nobody will wanna join in on that. They hear that, we hear that. We need something productive, problem solving.
Right. And, and I think, I think, you know, what we all have in common is that we have folks in the community that are coming to their commissioners, that are coming to their BPU board members, and they're asking us for relief. And, you know, folks are, are. And, you know, folks are, are, you know, they're being priced out of living here. I don't know about you guys, I mean, I'm not going to sit here and wait for, you know, another swath of, of Western Wyandotte County to be taken up by Arrowhead Stadium. I'd love it if it did, but I don't think we can wait for that, right? I mean, our folks are looking for relief today. And, and so I think that if, if we, if they're not even willing to have a discussion about it, I understand all they can tell us is no, we're not going to meet with you, as they've done already about the bifurcation of the bill. That's all they can tell us. But I just, I think we have to try. I understand that they're not coming and clamoring at our door, asking, hey, you guys want to meet with us? But I, I think we have to try. So I don't know if that helps, but it probably doesn't, huh?
So what I've got is to, that we would, when we request the meeting, some of the topics that we'd like to discuss with, with them in a non-adversarial way is the surrounding the bill, bifurcation of the bill, the pilot and free services and U G efficiencies. Is that where?
Yes, sir.
And that's probably more than, it's probably a star.
More than we'll have time for.
Yeah, okay, all right. So now, thank you for the input and.
Yeah, we probably want to change discuss to problem solve. Because discussing is what's been happening with no resolution. We'd like to see, see some, some resolutions.
Good points.
All right, that's all I have.
I forgot, I forgot, I did want to ask from Jan, Janetta, I did want to ask her perspective of the, the in-person appointments, how that was going. I, I heard it from Bill, but I really wanted to hear from the person that's been dealing with it, your perspective. Can you?
Sure. Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening. So far it's been going well. We have had two appointments that were scheduled for today. One, I believe, appointment that's scheduled for tomorrow. We did have one person for the early appointment that did come in today. The second person did not come to their appointment. I believe we, what we have done is tried to look at the reasons why a person is scheduling an appointment, which we did a great job. I thank Rick for helping us to set up our calendar, but it gives you a lot of, it gives us a lot of information and it allows you to tell us why you're coming, what you're setting your appointment up for. So in setting that up, there was one appointment maybe that was set up for something that was already done on that account. Let's say you say, I want to sign for service. We see that you're already signed for service. You want to finalize your service. We see that the service is already finalized. So what that allows us to do is then to look at that account, see maybe what it is that person may want to do. But she reached out to them. I had one of our supervisors, she reached out to them. And just, you know, just kind of tried to figure out what it was that you wanted to do and, and provided some information. So I believe with that information that was provided, the person didn't actually decide they needed to come in. The other person came in, they were taken care of, it was handled very well. It, it was a great appointment. And so we only have one, I think, the last time I looked, we had one scheduled for tomorrow afternoon as well. And we'll, we'll take care of that one, but I will continue to keep them updated on the appointments that we have, what they're scheduled for. It allows us then to see if we need to add more information. That's one of the things I said today was maybe we need to add even more information to our calendar when you're setting it up that just allows you to know what exactly can be done. What, it wouldn't matter if, if it came up, if you didn't, if you called, if you, if you didn't call, but the things that we can assist you with. And so it just gives some, gives some additional information to the customer.
Janetta, so is there somebody available that speaks Spanish? If the person needs a Spanish speaking?
If a customer would ask for that, when they set up the appointment, we'll provide that.
Whatever.
We would provide that. We've also switched the calendar over. So it is provided in Spanish. So if the person writes to us in Spanish and would need someone to help with that, then we could provide that. We're also looking to some other resources in order to provide that assistance.
So the, the, the information is out there to the public where do you think it's pretty much widespread, the information where people do know that now they, they can't make an appointment online?
Oh, absolutely.
Very good.
We've added, we've added that to our I B R, we've also put that on our website, so it is, it is on there.
Thank you.
And is the time, this is David, Janette Hansen. Will there be a longer time than three? Because some people, again, I'm concerned about the hours that it might go longer because a lot of people are working during the nine to three, which we heard originally. And as we, you know, I'm, I'm hoping, of course, ultimately that we'll get to the point where we have walk-ins that are available. I know this is still in the infancy. But is there a longer time than three so that someone can make an appointment and come after they get through the initial? And maybe is at least five, I'd love to see six o'clock, like you had back in the old days. You remember back in the old days where there were two days a week? When they could come to the lobby up to, I think, six o'clock? You remember that?
It was seven, and yes, sir, I do.
Okay, yeah, so I don't know if there's that opportunity that might come, you know, for those that are still working, maybe a nine to five to be able to come.
Okay.
But there is, is that, that was, I guess that was a question. So we're still stuck at three?
At this time, the hours will be nine to three. If we see a need to revise anything or go back and look at what we have already, are already providing, then there's always an opportunity to reassess the situation and, and provide some different opportunities. But we'll know that more as we hear from customers and as we have appointments. We would do that. The ten to seven was not, was not well attended to keep several employees and, and security here for. And so that was one of the things that we had looked, were looking at prior to that, trying to see if that was still something that was needed because it wasn't very useful. And so we definitely will always have the opportunity to go back and reassess.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, whoa, hold on, Janetta, hold on. Sorry that Stevie opened this can, but, and this may, this likely is not a question for you.
Okay.
But I did just look up on the website, see where I could find that availability. I understand this has been a soft launch. This is not easy to find. And so I think that as we go through this process and we go beyond our soft launch, and this is now, you know, a standard offering again at B P U, I would ask that we put this more prominently on the website so a customer can easily find. Again, I know that's not a you thing, but so really you could, sorry.
That's okay, we had discussed this, and so we will, we'll discuss that again with David. I have to, to see where it's located and to make sure that customers can find that information.
Well, currently it's under the residential, at the very bottom, and it says schedule appointment, which is great. But like, you know what I'm saying, I mean, like, you gotta, you gotta know to go there, to know that's even off.
Also be another spot there, so I will look and make sure that I see that on there.
And, and, well, David's not here, is he? Is he online?
I, I, I thought he talked about hanging a banner on the, on the front page.
I didn't see it, but I'm also looking at the mobile version, so it's possible.
And there should be, it should be on the banner that you see going across there. You just click it, it should be there, but, but, but we'll check to make sure.
Is it? Okay, and it may not be on the mobile version, so I could be, okay. Is it? Did I miss it? Am I blind?
That's, that's okay, that's what I said, I'll, I'll check because it was supposed to. And we did verify that prior to going, so we'll just make sure that it's still.
Okay, and then the last thing, and again, this is not you, but this is just suggestion. I, I see that there is a segment in the B P U connection around this in, B P U in person, which is also great. But the URL that we point to is simply just B P U's webpage. So, I mean, if there's like a specific URL, we could point in our materials, I think that would be helpful to.
I agree, thank, thank you for pointing that out.
Well, I mean, you know, I just was reading it, so, and Stevie brought it up, so thank you.
That was the last minute ad to get that on there, so.
No, I, look, I get, I mean, appreciate all the effort that's been put into this because I know it's, it's been tedious from us, so thank you. I'm going to adjourn.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded.
Pardon me, point, point, point of clarification, did you have your statement, Mr. President?
Yes, I did.
You did have the board comments, okay, I missed that part.
Yes, I did, it was about requesting, requesting your input on the letter that we're going to send to the U G requesting meeting.
Yes, sir, just wanted to have equal opportunity for us all to participate in the board.
I'm going to take care of myself.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, now, we can, we have a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Brennaman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.